We'll go ahead and get started. Mr. Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose name is well delivered, and justice for all.
Uh, roll call please.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson. Counselor Trask.
Present.
Counselor Gorley. Counselor Coleman.
Present.
Counselor Sanchez.
Here.
Counselor Richards.
Present.
Uh, let the record show we have seven present with no absence. Um, before I get started, I'm gonna head, go ahead and read the meeting instructions for online participation in public meetings. Thank you to everyone who has joined us this evening. For members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting virtually, we have some instructions to help in case you are new to using Microsoft Teams. To take part, you will need to locate the chat bubble icon to participate in the meeting online. The chat bubble icon indicated with a yellow arrow on the screen now. You may be in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, or you may need to click on the three dots to see the extended drop-down menu. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak during the meeting, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In that chat, you'll enter your name, address, and phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss with the council. If you have signed in, you may be called upon speaking anytime during the meeting, but probably during the agenda item you have entered to speak about. You can choose the hand icon. Also look in the upper right-hand corner to indicate you desire to speak. It is equivalent to raising your hand. The mayor, the acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give you enough, we'll give everybody who wished to speak tonight a few minutes right now to enter the name, address, and phone number, and the topic they would like to address with the council. In the interest of time, speakers should not repeat their points of the previous speaker. Instead, you will, you will agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes, and each extension of time will be at the sole discretion of the mayor or the meeting chairperson per council rules. Those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the chair, mayor, or chairperson, and called to speak at appropriate time. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules. At this time, consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all fair by, uh, roll call please.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Let the record show we have seven eyes with no nays approval of a consent agenda. At this time, request for visitors and hearing petitions. Anybody who'd like to forth be heard, come forth with a name and address to be noticed. Okay. Some old business. Request for council action Jacobs, C H two M Hill, O M I Water Waste Water Treatment Facilities Contract Amendment, page eight.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, in front of you, the beginning of page eight of your packet. A recap. Online. He's been a contract with Jacobs last. By several years. Staff audit of facilities years ago was. Not being kept up to our expectations. Since that time, looked at different options in which operate that facility, including a. RFP. Negotiated. We also use outside consultant, figure out our cost if we're to bring those patients in house. Council looked at those numbers and at that and decided that it would be best to immediately buy operations for. That's been working towards that now for several months. As part of that, maintaining our contract with Jacobs.
I'm not gonna go through all that again. So in the effort to end the contract within the parameters of the contract, uh, we bring to you a document today that we think is very fair. Uh, to both parties in order to end the contract amicably. Um, it's in front of you. If you have any questions on it, we're happy to answer it. Essentially, the, we would terminate, excuse me, we would end our contract uh, with Jacobs on July first. There would be a 3% demobilization fee as outlined in the contract. Uh, there would be a 3% escalation fee for the 2019, 20 year, or excuse me, 2020, 2021 year. Uh, we do take in a $3,500 piece of equipment for free. We do pay $27,445 in repair costs. Uh, for this year, we have capped our repairs. Um, Jacobs is agreeing to allow our staff, who will be taking over daily operations, to shadow them and train. And you have that amendment number four in front of you.
Any questions, counsel? At this time, council directive.
Mr. Mayor, before you go there, so, right, what is the, what is the total cost that is gonna cost this? Give me a rough idea of what are you gonna come up with.
Well, we're still on the hook for regular cut for the, for the fee.
Right.
Um.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good. That's fine.
Uh, there, uh, okay, real quick. I don't have that exact number in front of me. I apologize.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, so moved is recommended to execute amendment number four with Jacobs.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Aye.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show we have seven eyes with no nays approval of the, of the, um, contract amendment cancellation. Information only, 2021 overlay project status update.
Mr. Mayor, council has approved a couple of, uh, street projects. And if you remember, there was a little flexibility in them depending on how the bids came back. We just wanted to give you a quick update on where that has all sorted itself out to.
Um, so, a few weeks ago, council awarded the contract for the phase one overlay to North C N E M Paving Company. And the original bid was 194,000. Um, as standard practice, we have a pre-construction meeting with contractors. We talk about schedule, equipment, materials. Uh, we walk the job site and make sure everybody's on the same page for what we expect. And it turned out in this case, we were not on the same page. So, um, it was a very good thing that we had this job site walk. Uh, and it turned out that, um, there was additional prep work beyond what we had previously reported as a correction. There was even more that the contractor pointed out as being um, beneficial for the long-term health of these streets. Uh, particularly the neighborhood of Cal Maya and 46th and on Juniper and 32nd Court, uh, which are some of the worst streets currently in the city. And so, we felt that in order to really do this right, um, we should probably take the contractor's advice. We didn't feel that he was just trying to add to the project for his own benefit. We really felt that it was sound advice for the health of the street, for the city's benefit. Um, unfortunately, the cost of that work would have added about $90,000 to the project, which was quite a bit more than the bid. So, we evaluated each schedule. Uh, the phase one project had four schedules in it. And we have decided to continue with the two kinda easy, low-hanging fruit. Um, we're continuing with Harding Street and Grape Loop. Um, but the Cal Maya neighborhood and the Juniper neighborhood, um, we felt it was more fair to the citizens and to the contractors who bid on the work to pull those out of phase one, move them into phase two, um, update the quantities, update the scope of the work that's necessary for those streets so that everybody has a chance to bid on it fairly and equally. We're not just giving a significant amount of extra work to the one contractor. Um, and this morning, we had the engineer come back out on the project. We walked all these streets again. We talked about the changes that were necessary. They're updating the plans for that. Um. Excuse me, I'm sorry. I lost my train of thought. And, oh yes, and the contractor is currently working on our project. They came in town yesterday and they did prep work on Grape Loop and on Harding Street. Um, they initially had wanted to pave today and tomorrow, but it rained a whole lot. Um, so they are ready to pave as soon as weather permits. And we just wanted to keep council apprised of these rather substantial changes to the project.
Any questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, I got one, what is, what is the second, you said the, Juniper is one of those.
Mm-hmm.
What part of Juniper is that? Is that from 35th through 39th? And that's the road that's next to the ball field creek?
35th to 32nd Court is the worst, yes.
And that's the one that's a really, really bad way?
Mm-hmm. Where almost half of the road has become gravel again, yeah.
That was an undeveloped area, and I don't think it was supposed to have been paved in the beginning with, correct?
That occurred prior to my tenure at the city, so I can't, can't answer affirmatively.
I believe that is an undeveloped street, and that was never supposed to have been done. I was wanting to complain of contention. If I'm not Counselor Gorley, that's not correct. Yes. Anyway, any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Is there a way to, um, do a site inspection prior to putting out bids when we have projects of this side, um, next time? Uh, so they can have their eyes on the job and then put the bid out, and if they have any questions, we can change before the, the contracts get bid on.
With the contractors?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, we can do that.
That would save probably some time and effort and stuff like that going forward, I would think.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, did, normally, we've done that before, where we set a date or times for people to come and ask questions in review. Did we, did we do that with this contract, with this request?
On very substantial projects, we have done those sort of pre-bid meetings. Uh, we didn't do it on this one, but for phase two, that's a very good idea, and we could certainly do that. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Trish. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, counsel.
Um, discussion only, library needs assessment, page 14.
Uh, some time ago, uh, council was asked if they would, uh, fund a study and needs assessment to see if our library, its current building was, was meeting the community's needs. Uh, we started this process some time ago. Uh, we did an RFP, we got a consultant. Um, contract was signed. Uh, they came in, began doing a library needs assessment. COVID hit, we stopped the, stopped it in order to freeze any further expenditures, uh, just with the unknown of, of the pandemic. As we came out of the pandemic, we restarted that project. Uh, in your packet, you have the results, you have the, uh, the recommendations from the consultant. Um, this has been a, a vetted process with some public input. Uh, it's gone through the library board. The library board unanimously recommended council accept this needs assessment. Uh, and now staff is looking for direction moving forward. Uh, do you, the next step in the process essentially would be to get an architect on board, do an RFP, and begin looking at some conceptual type designs. Um, and nailing down a location. Uh, it's a lengthy document. Um, it's a thorough document. Uh, it gives you some idea with some graphics on size, just, uh, to let you know what you wanna do, uh, or what they would suggest we need. What they're suggesting is not what we have to do. Uh, my, my thought on this is, if council believes this, uh, uh, study justifies the need to continue to look into a different facility, um, then we can do that further. Uh, whatever they recommend is not what the council is stuck to. Uh, but the next step would be to, to kinda solidify those things, get some hard numbers, uh, and then begin moving forward.
Any questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I apologize, Brandon, I don't have the internet connection anymore, so I can't pull up those documents.
I'm thinking that most are going to lose the internet access since it appears the wifi has crashed. So, I'm working on trying to get it back up. It's gonna take me a few minutes.
Any questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, um, I think the needs assessment was very thorough. I think they missed a few things in terms of where the library might go. Um, but that, I recognize that may not have really been their objective, that their really objective was to determine what the needs are as far as a new library would be concerned. Um, you're right, it is very thorough. I, I hope that this council looks at a, a variety of things, though, when we decide if we're going to do a new library in terms of where we put that library, 'cause I think we have some, um, additional things to look at rather than the two places they recommended here.
I have to agree with Counselor Gerson on that. I, one topic was brought up of maybe at the, at the, um, senior center, Boys and Girls Club is a potential site, and that would be not a bad location because you're right across from the high school, you maybe will attach to an existing facility, maybe cut back on some of the cost, but it's something to look at, so. Any other questions, counsel?
Okay, one, one quick question. So, the, the architect is gonna be $100,000? Is that what it is? 10% of the, is that what it is?
If, some of it's gonna, so the architect's gonna come in, we would probably put all that into an RFP, and then they would give us that price. What we learned is generally speaking, an architect's cost to get you all the way through construction is going to be, as we found out with this building, roughly 10% of the total cost. So, if we put out an, an RFP, uh, you know, we can set a square footage, you can set it by a dollar amount. Um, you could just see what they come up with.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I'm actually able to pull.
Pull mine up. Yeah, um, do we maybe wanna take a short recess and see what Brandon's gonna be able to do for us, or?
I, okay. Let me take a quick five minutes if we want, just to make sure everybody's on. I, I was on, but that's still, everybody needs to be. I think you guys passed back on. I'm, I'm able to get it.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, are, are we, are we definitely taking a recess? I'm sorry.
Um, let's go ahead and take a couple minute recess, make sure everybody has got this.
Sure, thank you.
I just like to be close to their, their recording. And also website next to it, it grounds it down, so I like.
Oh.
Okay.
I'm.
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 I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm. I'm.
Frank's desk is now the hot zone.
Um. I will go ahead and resume council and, um, go back to library needs assessment discussion.
Uh, so as staff, we're just kinda looking for, do you want us to put together an RFP, uh, to, to take that next step? Uh, uh, or not? That's kinda where it comes down to.
I guess, question, Mr. Dowry is, which was a little bit of a brief discussion, was grants out there. Um, uh, poor people like Mr. Gates up in Washington, he may be able to.
Struggling right now.
Struggling, 50% struggling right now. Um, but I mean, that, I guess, would be the answer to the question, if, if it looks like that there's potential where we can get, you know, maybe Rose could come back and, and say, hey, there's a million here, there's a million here, potential here, potential there. I, you know, then it may answer the question of.
People, so people love libraries. Um, lots of people, uh, philanthropists love to attach their names to libraries because libraries last, as ours has, for 50, 60, 70 years at a time, those buildings are permanent. Uh, and they're certainly advantageous and a, and a good thing for every community to have. Uh, so there definitely is grant money out there. Um, so what, what we could do is we would, we can split this RFP up into, um, uh, come in and, and give us some guidance on what you'd be looking at and some costs. And then whether they help us with construction or not would be a, a separate piece of the contract. Uh, so they could get us some conceptuals. Once we have some conceptuals and some, some little harder numbers than, than what this assessment says. Um, but I, I'm, I'm not a construction management guy. I, I think those of you who are here during the city hall remodel know that. I'm very open about that. Um, so if we want some harder numbers to move forward, we're gonna have to bring somebody else in that, that has a little more expertise than I do.
Okay, let's council's consensus of what they would like to do.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
So, the current library is 5,800 square feet, and this one is possibly going up to 13,000 square feet?
Well, that would be, that would be the council's discretion, how big of a building to build. What they've done is they've looked at, they've assessed needs of the community. They've gone out to other communities, other cities, kinda taken what is a standard for these different programs that we offer. Um, for the different needs of different demographics, and put that into this document to give you a rough idea of, if you want to do what's going to essentially meet these needs.
That the library gets? So if we agree to this, we're gonna say we're gonna pay a million dollars to get this RFP for the architect to figure out what to do?
Uh, no, I don't think so. Um, not, like, I think we would break it into pieces. Um, I think the next step is to bring somebody in to give us some conceptual ideas, some hard dollars. Um, work with us on a design, and then we would see if we wanted to take it forward.
And that's gonna come out of the levy money?
Um, well, yes, it would come out of the levy. So if you recall, we've been putting extra funds aside with the understanding that we may or may not want to take on a project, so there's money there. Uh, additionally, we have a bequest that is, uh, Coming due here at some point in time, there has been a purchase and sale agreement that's been presented. So there is, we would be able to find funding to to do this, I believe, but we're going to have to put out a, we'd have to ask how much it's going to cost, quite frankly.
I know that for this city hall. Before we took on this building projections at that time, and Mr. Snyder, you probably remember this was anywhere from five to eight million if we were to go out and build. Our city hall, and so we were fortunate to get this building. Right now, ten to twelve million, that seems a little high, but we need to know and to get an accurate number. Right now with building material prices, probably twenty five to fifty million. But. You know, it is what it is, we do need to know what it's going to cost, so it's up to council, what's your thoughts of what we want to do, so.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I I I've never been in the, I haven't been in the library very many times in my few years that I've been here. But when I see the kids that they put in there and and do stuff for them, that's pretty important for me, I don't have children at home anymore, but. It's a crowded area, I mean, it's really crowded. So I I'm I'm for, I'm for this moving this forward for the assessment, I I think we need to need some numbers and. I don't know thirteen hundred, thirteen thousand feet enough, I've been, I don't know, how big is one we have fifty seven hundred, how big is the one in Lebanon, anybody know? It's huge, for me, it seems like it's huge.
Brandon's guessing guessing sixteen thousand square feet.
It's a big library, I've been in there and it's got a lot of good stuff, especially a lot of good stuff for kids.
This building is twelve five.
The entire building, we have what we affectionately refer to as the east wing, which we haven't utilized yet.
Yeah, so that gives you kind of an idea of size when comparison, so. So we, I think we could go bigger or smaller, it's up to us, council too.
I love the library, I'm just nervous about the cost, so.
And I think also, again, just not having, going out and buying land and and having to build, that might be your twelve million thought. But if I again, Councilperson brought up one idea was you have Boys and Girls Club and Senior Center. If we could tie into that, that might, we don't have to buy the land, they may, we may probably save money, there may be options, so we may be only in the end run save money, I don't know. We won't know until unless we look at it and pursue it.
So on that thought, I I really respect all the wonderful opinions we get because that would never have been on my radar. We do need to remember traffic flow and that we have businesses down in the core area that need more traffic flow as well. And so we need to think about what we're doing to our community when we move something like the library around. I also think that this is a wonderful opportunity to invest within our com- within our community in a way that. Solidifies that we believe in them, that communities that are progressive as far as growth, what's going on in Lebanon and in communities that are successful. They make these kind of investments and we need to think about it too, although we can watch our costs. Anybody that's been inside of a Borders bookstore knows it's unlimited possibilities to get people into there to read and to enjoy that time and to. Reinvigorate themselves and a library doesn't have to be stuffy books on a shelf, it can be a great place for people to to come to and I actually miss that about Rose being here is all those. Ukuleles and stuff that she was always doing to make her library vital to the community. I I really miss that and I think we have an opportunity and we get to figure out what that looks like.
Well, to add on to that, something to keep in mind, in past discussions that I've brought up. You know, when it comes to bringing jobs to a community, to prospective employers, to. Business, just new business growth, etc., etc., they're going to look at the whole picture, they're going to look at our police, fire, library, schools. City Hall, everything as a whole and total infrastructure. So if we've got our act together, we we look like we're playing with the the big boys and professionals on all aspects of our infrastructure, including the library. That's how that they're going to, and again, I've I've been advocating medical, that's huge, have medical to our community. That's what's going to, that's going to be the the tilting factor of bringing business to our, to our community, so.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, at this point, what we're asking for is a consensus on does the council want staff to invest in bringing you back an RFP? To look at a conceptual designs.
Unless there's any further questions, what is the consensus?
I say yes for ideas.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Okay, moving on. New business request for council action, community park donations. At this time, because it's a conflict of interest, I am staying for from the decisions of this topic. I possibly can answer some possible questions, but that's the limits to what I will go. So moving forward, I will turn it over to my pro tem to take to take this and run with.
You could award me on that one.
Carol, you surprised her with that move. So this begins on page one hundred and fourteen of your of your packet. Yeah, we've had some very generous community members come forward, I'm going to turn it over to Blair and he can kind of fill you in on the background and the history and where things stand currently.
Good evening, so. As it states in the RCA, we have had some donors come forward with generous offers of donations for some park improvements. And those those include, I believe where it stands right now are two different dog parks plus a fire truck. Playground that was originally by the donors proposed for Clover Memorial Park. In April, that was submitted and then later in April, the Park and Tree Committee. Had a public meeting where they discussed these these donations and and at that meeting, we we talked about. The effect on the on city staff, we talked about the process that we would need to go through to to get. To get to be able to accept the donation, what additional costs it might entail. We also talked about locations where it would be appropriate, I think originally the donor suggested having a dog park at Sankey Park. And then another one that had us here at next to city hall. And the Park and Tree Committee all discussed it, one of the concerns with the original request was they wanted to spread. The amenities around the city a bit more and so they were not as interested in Sankey Park being a location for a dog park. But rather, one of the other parks, what they settled on was they thought North Side was a prime location, given the the space available there. As well as as here at at city hall. The proposal for the playground at Clover Memorial, their concern with that was the lack of parking at that park. And its proximity to Main Street makes it a place that they were not excited about having children attracted to. The the situation with that park is such that it it. Mostly the residents nearby are are going to be the ones that are going to be able to access access that one on foot. More than anyone else, and so there, they looked at that and they recommended moving that proposal to Strawberry Park where there's plenty of room and there's also room for additional parking to be constructed there. And so their recommendation to the council is to accept the donation with those modifications that. One dark bark would be here at City Hall and with the space we have next to City Hall and another would be at North Side and then they're seeking to. Talk to the donors to see if they would be willing to put the proposed playground equipment in Strawberry Park rather than Clover. And so the question before you is. What, which of these donations do you want to accept, you're you're the ultimate authority here for the city. The Park and Tree Committee can make recommendations, but they don't have the authority to actually. Set any policy or 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 take any donations for the city. And so. What, what would you like to see, are you happy with those locations, are there modifications you would like to seek? And what other and what other information would you like to know about? How this could be done?
Mr. Mayor. Blair is is right, we went through this, it was kind of dropped on us very, I mean, kind of surprisingly, a good surprise though. And I think Dominic and Greg have talked about whether we can do that. With the employees we have now, and I'm not sure that you. Were a hundred percent sure that you could, the parks and and the and the city public works people can can. Take that into and 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 get some of that stuff done in a timely matter now, we don't know, at least I don't know. What the the people's timeframe would be, I just don't know, because it's probably not going to be done in the next several months, I would think. But I I think it's a really good plan because we've been talking about a, well, actually, one person on the council has been pushing this for quite a while, I won't mention who that is, but. About a dog park and I think and I, there's some people that were out here several months ago and she said she would be all for that too. Because they have to go to Sunnyside if they want to do any, let their dog go and cra- go crazy. So I think it's a good thing. And I would be for all of those things and if they, if we could talk, I believe that if we could talk them into going from Clover. To strawberry, I think that would be a better option. Mainly because of the parking on that street, now however, all the, most of the kids that are going to be playing there are going to be in that community, so they probably would walk, a lot of them. And so that might not as big of issue as we think it might be, so. This this came up quite a while ago and we need to, we need to, I think we need to move forward because we won't get this option or opportunity again possibly for quite a while, that's just my opinion.
Counselors, forgive me, I left out one other aspect of this was the proposal to put in a small playground and landscaped area here next to city hall as well as the dog park. So there's a total of of four requests, the the dog park here at city hall, the dog park at North Side, the playground at. At strawberry, originally Clover, but the rec- the plant, Park and Tree Committee is recommending a strawberry and then a playground and landscaped area here next to city hall.
So.
Counselor. And it's a pretty substantial amount of money, it's not, you know, it's quite a bit, it's not going to build a park like Sankey, but it's going to be something for the kids to play and a dog park obviously.
So is the. Where at over here with the dog park, would it be under the trees or in that back fenced area?
So this is still, there's still plenty of room for modifications at this stage. The proposal, I I believe, is more for the back side where there's more cleared area. And I I believe the idea was to take advantage of some of the existing fencing. That's, I think that's certainly up for modification though, because the question is how tall of fencing i- is. Is the right height for a dog park and what's going to keep people from wanting to be in the dog park? I mean, you 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 want to make sure that the dog owners are comfortable there as well as the dogs.
Well, if it's behind and not underneath the trees, I think I'd be in favor of that. But if it's taking up area that probably should be better suited for picnic tables, then I'm not in favor of that. Also, Strawberry Park, is there room there for a dog park and playground equipment because there's a lot of dead space there? And a lot of people in the neighborhood and so, you know, and it does serve the same people that are would be going to Clover, so that's a natural fit. But I had originally thought maybe Fisherman or something down at North Side, but. I think having a dog park down there is probably a good idea because it stimulates more people to come into that area, it'd be really good for the community.
Yeah, the area at North Side is, right now is basically just a big grassy field and and our public work staff mow it. But it's not used for anything beyond that and so it it really could, there's plenty of room there and and you're right, strawberry has plenty of room as well that could house, it could house both, both uses.
So on that, if staff is constrained to time and resources, is that something that we could get volunteers to help with since it's a dog park? And we know how those are built?
To some degree, we would certainly utilize volunteers in any way that we could. A lot of it though would include some equipment, which we wouldn't want to utilize volunteers for. So I I would say we'll use them in any way that we can, we're. We love free labor and community involvement. So as we work towards the design, we would try to figure that out where we could or not. As the equipment comes in though, it's got to be put together by spec and much like we do with our playground, it was under the, we used members of the Rotary Club and the Park and Tree Committee when we. Erected the playground at Sankey Park under supervision, so we would do whatever we could. Without exposing ourselves to liability.
Mr. Mayor, I I agree that Global Park is a great place for a playground since that's the neighborhood I live in. Walking in that neighborhood with my daughter, going down to Main Street, people are not going thirty five when they come into Sweet Home, so I don't think putting a playground there is a good idea. I think Strawberry Park is an excellent place for a playground, I'm a little concerned about the moisture there and Greg knows about how wet it can get down there and I also, I think I heard discussion before about. Park and Tree Committee needing a dog park on the east end and the west end and I think that's why we have one here and one down. And I think North Side is a great location since it's already dry, ready to go, I mean, it's pretty clear, but I I would definitely not recommend one.
Mr. Mayor, I I think that, I think that Strawberry Park could still have a dog park there. Because if you go to the east side of the property, not the west side where the creek is, you'd have plenty of room for. A dog park too. And I tell you, I'm on the park sport and I don't care which one they do, I I it's whatever you, well, whatever we decide, I, it's not, I don't have a dog. Some people do and they want them and that's, that's, there's nothing wrong with that, I think it's a good idea. Because they don't have a place to, they don't have a place to do that. So whatever you guys decide, I'm good with, so it makes me no difference, but.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, so I'm not sure if this is the proper time to bring this up, but I would just like to read this for everybody to hear, I got an email today from a gal who lives behind Hilltop Market. And their kids don't have a place to play over there, so I'm not sure if Strawberry Park or Clover Park is down there on that side of town, but. There is currently a small empty field, I think it's the perfect location to place a few small pieces of park equipment if the property could be obtained and maybe donated to the city. We have a lot of kids that come to play in our area, many of the residents have expressed an interest in having a safe place for our kids to hang out. I am reaching out to you on behalf of our neighborhood and myself, our kids have been playing in that field for many years, building forts, it's not very well maintained. We have found needles and other hazardous trash, our kids frequent Radiator Supply House property, but we would like to give them a legitimate place to hang out. So they are not finding themselves in trouble, thank you, so I don't know if we have any resources to go to that side of town or that side of the street to help those kids out too.
If we put a playground here and a dog park here, that adds to this side of town that we haven't, we don't have anything on this side of town. My preference would be to put a dog park here. Any any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just to address Counselor Sanchez, you're talking about creating a whole new park there. Which. Having spent a significant amount of time in parks and recreation prior to coming here, I'm in complete agreement with her, we lack adequate park space on on the east end of town. Procedurally though, I think it's a, it would be a Park and Tree Committee. Process they would embark upon, we have funding, I believe, in the proposed budget. For a new master plan which would identify those areas that would be referred to as Park Four. And set standards for those areas of where we want to put parks based on. and set standards for those areas of where we want to put parks based on community um input. So I would say let's, if we want to follow that process, then we can actually we'll start pinpointing areas to add parks that are most advantageous to the community.
Thank you.
Well, and I one more thing. I I I agree, because we've talked about that at the uh at the parks. But w- we have a, we're in a phase where we are kind of limited. I mean, we're we're, we spent a lot of money on on the on Sankey Park. And and it's it's turned out to be a really good park, and it's being used way more than it was even five, six years ago. But you should, you're right, we need somebody out here. But it's a process that takes a lot of money, and we have to, we need to come, we need to complete the ones that we have going. I'm not, I'm not opposed to one over here uh or out there, too. But it's going to be costly, as we well know, so.
It it's all, it's certainly always easier to to do something like this when you already own the property.
Yes.
Uh, and and in this case, one of that's was one of the factors that that came in uh into discussion of the Park and Tree Committee. And the d- discussion of of spreading these things out around the city to try to maximize the benefit to various parts of the city was was kind of how the mix of North Side and City Hall um came into being. So and we did, we definitely want to study this more with a Parks Master Plan to to really find the areas that need that benefit uh more than the others. So I appreciate.
And the the cost of property right now is probably crazy. But maybe one of the, maybe that fellow that owns that property is the guy that owns the 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 store and the and the uh Spolitos. They might be willing to give us a small part of that.
If.
I don't know.
If is it the area behind Hilltop Market?
Yes. It's a big.
I believe they have plans. I believe they have plans.
Yeah. I know that they were going to put duplexes in at one point. Now, one of my good friends owned that for such a long time, and he sold it, but anyway.
There is two different discussions. First, taking advantage of the ability to put in dog parks that is already on the table and um someone offering to buy some playground equipment. I think those are things that we need to take very seriously and utilize in the parks that we have. The second conversation is, you're right, we need to get something out on the other end of town. And I think we can do that, but we can't resolve that tonight with this. It's a separate discussion, so.
Yeah, one more point. Uh, we missed an opportunity to do something in this property right here a few years ago. Uh, we dropped the ball on that, in my opinion, and uh and it was the same situation. They wanted to build a park here, and we just didn't get it done. And part of that was the naming of the park, which I never, I never knew that we had to go through this big, long process to name a park, but we do apparently. And I don't know how long it is, but uh, so there's a little difficulty with that, too. And and I mean, it was a um a person's name that was with anyway. So um, yeah, I I think we need to move forward this.
Uh, on on that note, that particular proposal, they did find a a home eventually next to on it on county land.
Yeah.
And and that land actually is much more suited to what they had in mind because they were really looking for more of a forested peaceful place, not a not a place for for kids to play.
So I need the direction of counsel, please.
Uh, madam? Can we, can we vote on all of this at the same time? Option two, option five, option eight, no?
I think it depends on your motion. If you if you want to make a motion to do all four of those uh the recommended options, you're welcome to. Or if you want to pick and choose among the various options, you can do that in your motion as well.
Well, if the council's not against that, I'll I'll make a motion to approve option four, five, eight, and eleven.
Four or two?
Oh, two, I'm sorry, yeah, two, five, eight, and eleven.
I'll second that one. I have a motion and a second to a to uh accept option two, five, eight, and eleven, which is a dog park at North Side at City Hall, the playground at the City Hall Park, and a playground at Strawberry Park. So uh, roll call, please, for vote. Yes.
Counselor Gerson?
Yes.
Counselor Trask?
Yes.
Counselor Richards? Counselor Sanchez?
Yes.
And Counselor Coleman?
Yes.
So it, but the recommendation passes, a vote of seven to zero in favor.
You need to clarify that. There needs to be six eyes with one abstention.
Oh, excuse me, you're right, sorry.
What, but before we get, we may have to come back if they don't want to go to Strawberry Park. That might be something that we we may have to address later on if they chose not to do that. So that's just a a caution.
I don't know if I can answer that question.
Yeah, I I think so what staff will do is go back to the donors and make sure they're okay with these changes and and then come back, let you know.
Okay, moving on, um, request for council action, Sankey Park Bandstand.
Uh, so this begins on page one twenty-three of your packet. So the Sankey Park Bandstand has been an issue we've been tackling now for quite some time. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to uh Blair and Greg and let them kind of discuss the history of it and fill you in on where we are at this point.
Thank you. So um, the bandstand was constructed in the late thirties or early early forties as a WPA project. While it is quite old, it was never placed on any historic registry. In early twenty eighteen, a tree fell on a structure which caused damage and concerns about the safety of the structure. Uh, we had a an engineering firm, Stability Engineering Incorporated, was hired to conduct a structural review, and they completed their report in July twenty nineteen. And their report showed that the structure does not meet building code, cannot meet snow load requirements for our area. And most concerning, it showed that the floor beams are inadequate, and the main horizontal structural beams are extremely inadequate, and the footings are significantly undersized. Since then, we've been attempting to gather more information, um, but it's been difficult to get more than very rough anecdotal est- estimates. Uh, we investigated a similar structure that the city of Lebanon recently constructed. Uh, the materials and labor for that structure was mostly donated, but based on discussions with people who were involved, uh, the cost of their structure was approximately a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Park and Tree Committee has discussed the matter and recommended that the structure uh be removed and replaced with a similarly sized structure that incorporates architectural elements and or materials from the original. We brought this attention matter to your attention in August of twenty twenty. And at that time, council directed staff to continue investigating options and costs. Since then, we've received a proposal from the city's engineer of record um to evaluate the structure and determine costs to either re- rehabilitate it or replace it. That proposal, just the just the research to look into that would cost approximately twenty-two thousand dollars. The city's engineer of record later stated that the structure cannot be brought up to code without dismantling it entirely and rebuilding it with an entirely new supporting structure, the cost of which would likely be quite high. Um, again, that twenty-two thousand dollar study would be needed to exactly nail down how much that would come to. After the recent removal of trees from Sankey Park, which exposed more of the hillside behind the bandstand, uh, we had the in some images and and ideas put together for you to look at and the Park and Tree Committee to look at that showed a potential replacement structure that could have some seating on the hillside, but also be designed to face uh in into the rest of the park as well. Those are included here for you just for discussion purposes and are not. We haven't really done much to uh beyond the images themselves to to move that forward. But it puts us at kind of a a decision point where we we've gotten to a point where we we can't really get much more information without spending money on it. Um, and we feel that we need a bit of direction from the council on on what your wishes are concerning the structure. So um, but we'd be happy to take any questions and.
Hopefully, that it's time for questions from council.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. So was an amphitheater in the original plans that we had for Sankey Park?
We we had included it as a possibility, but it was not in the plan that was funded by the grant. So it was, it was kind of identified as a future addition, um, not something that would be part of this this particular grant.
And then how much money is, is there any money, grant money left?
The the grant that we have for Sankey Park, it has not been fully expended, but we expect it to get pretty close to that when we have completed all the improvements that are that were funded with that grant.
Brandon?
And and I don't think we'd be able to repurpose for this kind of activity only because it wasn't in our original plan when we submitted the grant.
Okay, thank you. I believe that the original, the amphitheater part of this was part of the original plans when they built the park, that they hasn't been brought forward since then because of probably financial constraints.
Well, I I know that we've had a lot of input. I'm sorry.
Okay, I don't see it on my screen, but go ahead.
We have somebody that wants to speak to pardon the.
Uh, if they may, I'm I'm not sure, Mr., if you want to recognize them, that's certainly up to you.
He was on the, Mr. Rogers. So if you want to come forth with the name and address and.
Right up here.
Thank you. Name is Patrick Rogers. Anyways, we, I'm coming here just kind of on behalf of my experience in the building industry and kind of some of the processes and attempts to do some hor- historical preservation in the past in different places. I'm fairly new to the community, probably about three, forty years. I think that I've worked hard to, one, find a heartbeat of this community when I first came and got a chance to meet a lot of people and businesses and founding families and and so my heart is also, you know, in seeing some of the preservation of what has existed here so long. And it's, you know, really a heartbeat of many, many people still left in this community, you know, that was here to build it. So I guess I, you know, wanted first to hear, you know, what other people's, you know, thoughts and processes investigations have led to. And it sounds like we haven't really got anywhere. In other words, it sounds like the last time they were given a directive, it was to go out and get some information. And um, they said it was hard, it was difficult, and we finally think, well, another building costs this much in Lebanon, and maybe it's twenty thousand to get somebody to give it. Well, let's just get rid of it, and we've got a new one, though, you know? And I really think that's not going to be a good answer. It's going to leave a really bad taste in people's mouth in this community that we didn't do our job before we tear this down. Because we can build anything everywhere. I mean, we talked about four or five parks, new parks, investments. This thing, we can't, we won't be able to put back if we tear it down and destroy it. Now, there may be significant work to it, but we don't even know what that cost is. We don't even know if other people will plus figure out what that cost is on a voluntary basis. You know, we got a lot of people. Or in a financial basis, a lot of people that love this community think I would encourage you to extend yourself just a moment more to find out, is there somebody out there? And I would volunteer to work to knock on every door in this community, to raise a dollar or five dollars or fifty dollars or whatever. I mean, we're a timber company. Th- this thing is a representation of our community, who we are. Let's not just throw it away and don't slap the people in the face that have lived here so long and would at least deserve a good effort to find out what is it going to take? What is it going to cost? There's money for libraries, there's money for all that that can be raised, you know? Historical conservation, that's money there, too.
Thank you, thank you for your input. Thank you for coming.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I know a lot of you know Bob Dalton and his wife. I can't remember her name right offhand, but
yeah, their family is big history for the Sankey Park. And they think as a family part of that, that they think that it would be best to tear it down. Um, and there'll be some backlash about that if we do that. Uh, and what the council decides is fine with me, too. But uh, we can have a a brand new, really nice one, or we can try to put that thing together with lumber that's maybe not, we can't, we can't get anymore. I don't know. Those beams are gone. There's no doubt about that. You can't get on there. If you get on there, it's going to be a bad deal because it's going to collapse. If we could, if we could do it in a reasonable amount of money, I guess that would be okay. But I I think that that we've looked at it so many times that it's just, it's, I'm, I'm not sure it's worth it to to do that. And it is a historical place. I mean, there's no doubt about that. I've been here all my life, okay? I never used Sankey Park until until the last fifteen years. Uh, and it's gone from where it was and to where it is. And uh, I walked by there with Bob and his wife two or three times, and they've talked every time about me removing it because it's, we can build one for a couple hundred thousand. I don't think we can fix that one for that kind of money. Maybe we can, but we just need to get something going because um it's not like the Parks Board has not talked about this that forever. And the consensus was, I think, if you're, correct me, Blair, I think it was consensus that from them is with and Bob's on that committee to 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 remove it.
So their their recommendation was uh was to remove that structure and have the replacement include as many elements as possible from that original. And and just to clarify, um, we, the the, we're here because in order to find out more, we have to spend money. It's not that it's too hard to find out, it's that we don't have funding allocated to really find out how much it's going to cost to to bring that structure up to a safe condition. And so the question is, do you want to spend twenty-two thousand dollars to find out how much it's going to sp- cost to bring it up to a safe condition? Or do we want to move forward with um some sort of of replacement?
Counsel.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may? So I went down there to the park today, and I did get on that thing, and it's not in as disrepair as I'm hearing that you're saying that it is. I did notice that in the emails that we got today from um Ray that the suggestion of people from, oh, I have to go find it, but they did not suggest tearing it down. They suggested repairing it as the best thing and removing it as the worst uh case.
Are you talking about the the Historical Society or the the State Historical Office?
No, yes, yes.
Okay, that that was, that was their recommendation, yes, based on just the the history of the structure?
It's the only structure of its type in the state. Um, it has been wanting to be listed in in these paperworks for the last forty years on historical registry, and I do not know why we haven't done that. I think that because of its uniqueness and what it brings to this town, um, I think that we have to save it. I think the people of the community want it saved. I understand that it's not worth it to some other people, but it's worth it to the majority of the people in this town. I think that we need to give them some sort of figure, and then we need to go to the town to see if they could raise some sort of money to match whatever the city can get in grants or fundings be be before we make that decision to let it go.
Mr. Mayor, it might be good to review pictures um that were provided by the Stability Engineering, Inc. and also their paperwork, which described the disrepair that it is in at this time.
Also, I clarification, Greg. Was it the tree that hit the roof? Was the roof is the what the main to problem with this?
It's the roof and the underlying structure. There's rot in a lot of the in some of the wood um in that understructure. And then they were looking at the foundations versus its pillars. Current code, it doesn't meet those, obviously, because it wasn't built recently. So to fix all that rot and all that, we would have to start at foundation and go up is basically was the recommendation.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, real quick, I'm right here in this letter. It says something that you don't have to be up to code when you um renovate something. So I would like to have uh more clarification on that, and that was from the Stability Engineer.
So, Mr. Mayor, I love this old building. I remember square dancing and having those activities going on in this building. Our community was very, very different when we were children. But I was born here, and I know. But I was born here and I know that wood rots. And every wooden structure in this community is eventually going to rot. Um, it's just the way it is. Black mold is a fact of life here. And I love the structure and the design of this because it's so warm. It, you're not going to find it anywhere else. But does that mean that we can't recreate that? To a, in a form that fits our needs better? When the beams that are underneath the building no longer serve us. And there's no power to it. There's no handicap accessibility. Nobody's used that structure in a very long time. I love the idea of an amphitheater. I don't actually like this design. I like boulders that people sit on and, and. Greenery and plants. I love Sweet Home. And I, I am not for retaining a building that is wooden for the sake of the wood. That is no longer viable. And that might not be very popular with, with people I care greatly with and about, but. We live in Sweet Home and it's wet. And eventually, even if it doesn't rot from moisture, it's going to get dry rot. And we need to have a plan going forward that fits the needs of everybody. And our budget and what we can do and right now. I don't think saving this building is our highest priority. I think. Looking at having something in the master plan for our parks down the road that gives tribute to that heritage is our best bet. Just like the people who built it, they had to make hard decisions. So do we.
Uh, Mr. A. Um, I agree with Counselor Gorley, but I also just don't really see the benefits in keeping it. I mean, even if we restored it. There's so much on it that we would have to change that it wouldn't even be like it was the original anymore. Be like a, a whole new building. So I just, I guess I just don't see why we would want to keep it. To say that it's restored or whatever, but besides that, I can't really.
Yeah, for discussion.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I think. That if we have the possibility of, of building something very similar. I think it would be, uh, beneficial to the community. I would like to save it. Just because I like to do that kind of thing, but. Having dealt with rotten wood very recently, I recognize that's a problem too, so.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I, I do like to save things and rehab old things. I do it often. But I, I do appreciate the Park and Trees Committee desire to, um, reflect some of this. In a new structure and I think that's really what we need to go with, um, because I am too concerned about, uh, the rot and. As, um, yeah, it's, it's really a disrepair.
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't, I don't like this concept either. I, I don't know if I like that. And this is just a concept that somebody came up with and I, I get that because. We had somebody on, we had somebody build a, a, a little road for us to put the amphitheater up on top of it. In sort of the same place that the, the old one is. Uh, and then have the, the, uh, people sitting down in the flat part and I don't know if that's what they want to do or not, but, but, uh. I mean, it's, it's, it's all the new stuff, you know, but I want it to look like the old one if we're going to build one.
So, so one thing with those, uh, with those concepts, um, the way they came about is we, we asked someone to put those together and then we gave some. Some, uh, some pictures of, uh, out of catalogs and such of what new. Structures look like pavilions and such. And I think the most important, uh, aspect that we were trying to capture was. The type of roof line that you would want on some new structure. Uh, ignore the colors, ignore the, the exact materials or the, the facade, but what, what kind of shape? Would meet the needs of the community and, and part of that with the intent of that, it was the, the, the grading that is now done on the hillside. Gives an opportunity to have kind of a two-level approach where you have. You can have one level going up the hill and have an audience up there. And then you can have a structure that's built at that same level that sticks out from it and is a stage from the other side. So from one end, it's people looking down at a stage. From the other side, it's people looking up at a stage. That was the intent, but a- again, it's for discussion purposes and, and take of it what you will and, and what you like and we'll. We're happy to, to take input, but again, it's a. The, the way structures are these days, you could put a structure together that is just a framework. And then you put a facade over it that. It has wood elements or, you know, you could have a facade that's entirely made of wood, but if the framework behind it is. Not going to rot, that's really the important part that we're talking about. Which is if you cho- if you chose to restore the original, that's probably what would end up happening is you'd have a framework. Put together that they would then slap the original, uh, pieces on top of. Uh, to make it look like the original, but underneath it would be brand new bones.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, that, that might be acceptable, but in the plans that you have from twenty sixteen, it says restored bandstand. So I'm not quite sure why we're diverting from the plans because that's what we agreed upon in this little thing right here. And I think that you're going to be doing a huge disservice to the community if you don't at least give them a figure for what it would cost to repair it. Prior to making a decision to let it go because I just, I do not believe that it's in such disrepair that it can't be repaired. Um, I was just down there today, so that's all.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, real quick. So a couple of things for clarification. Number one. Uh, what Counselor Sanchez is referring to from twenty sixteen is before the tree fell on it. And before it exposed, um, when that plan was made, nobody had any idea of the. Condition of the, of the materials. Uh, the, the tree falling on it exposed, um, the issues that we're discussing. It exposed a bunch of dry rot that. Uh, then led us to do some more investigation and look a little bit farther into it, so. The plan from twenty sixteen is prior to the understanding of, of, of the issues with the structure. Um, what I would like to ask the council to do at this point though is understand. These conceptuals don't tie you to anything. The question in front of the council tonight is. Do we invest more money to find out what we need to do to save the structure? So it's going to be tw- at least twenty-two thousand dollars to find out what we need to do and get an estimate to move forward. Uh, or does the council want to utilize that twenty-two thousand dollars into moving forward with a. Different one of which that design will go before the Parks Board. Parks Board will make a recommendation and the council would have the final authority on that design.
Yes, Mayor, I, I'm not sure, but didn't we have somebody look at that before? And, and what was their conclusion?
That report is as part of this packet.
Yes, and I think if I'm not mistaken, they were saying that it's going to cost a bunch of money to do that. Is that true?
Yeah, they didn't put a dollar amount, but basically they started with the foundation was undersized, the pillars aside, um, all the joy scene. A- and basically a lot of it would have to be replaced.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we do this study, uh, they will tell us what it would cost to rehabilitate it? Is that correct? Is that what?
That's, that's my understanding of what the proposal that the si- engineer of record came forward with was. Yes, you spend the money and you, you get the, the solid estimate of exactly what needs to be done to the structure and how much it'll cost.
Your microphone, Counselor, sorry.
I hate these.
Oh, you turned it back off. You had it for a second, it flashed, there you go.
Okay, so can we defer this back to the park boards?
I think Park Board's already very aware of all the information and has made a recommendation.
They can't spend the money. We have to.
Yeah.
I, I think that it was, now, I could be wrong, I'm pretty sure that their consensus was to remove it. We can go to the next, we can put this off and go to the next Parks Board meeting, which I'm not sure, it might, I think it's one next month. And we could bring it back to you, if that's what you want. We could do that. Um, it's not going to go anywhere. We're not going to be building one. In the next six months or something, but it would be entirely up to you folks. If you want us to go back, is, is that okay with you Blair?
So I, I, I think if you want to send it back to the, the Park and Tree Committee, you need to have some instructions on what you want them to talk about. And what you want them to determine. So if there's a question for them to look into, that's what, that's what you would send it back for, but. Based on the information they have, they, they've made their recommendation. Um, if you have other things you want them to look at, then that's what they would.
It would be so that if we removed it. Um, what would their recommendations be moving forward?
Well, I think, I think that, I guess we could take it back to him and say to you, you, would you prefer to have it removed or redone? But I think you're absolutely right. I think they made a pretty sound decision that they do not want to put money to.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, to answer your question, Counselor Gorley, their recommendation is remove it.
Yes.
That, that was the question before them. They've said remove it and build a different one.
That incorporates the element.
That would incorporate elements of the current one, so you would end up with something that somehow. Uh, would resemble in some way, shape or form the current structure.
Clarification, how did they come up with the twenty-two thousand?
The engineers looked at the time and there's a, it's in the.
There's a proposal in there, in the packet from the, the city engineer of record. Um, that details all the work. It's on page, uh, one thirty-six, six of the packet. And he details the scope of all the services that they would provide and then what it would, their estimate of what it would cost.
And, Mr. Mayor, we have some public comment from online. If you would like me to read that in the record, we would allow that.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, Sean Schaefer and Elizabeth Anderson are online. Um, they made the comment, I agree with Counselor Gorley as well. We need to build for the future while both honoring the roots of our community. I'm a fifth generation Oregonian and have ties to this community generations long. He then apologized for misspelling Counselor Gorley's name in the first paragraph. Uh, their comment then went on to say restoration would cost way, in all caps, more than replacement. And it wouldn't serve the community as well as new technology and future focused design. Another guest with the initials LL. Uh, stated, I agree too. You can have a new stage that could be used for so much and yet have the design give a nod to the current design. Such as incorporating design on the top front gable. Uh, Mr. Schaefer and Ms. Anderson, uh, then piped in again and, and said, remove and renew.
So with that, Mr. Mayor, I, I move. That we go with option number three, remove the bandstand and replace it with a similarly sized structure.
Motion on the table.
I'll second that.
Motion to second by roll call, please.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
No.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Let the record show we have six eyes with one nay, uh, removal of the bands.
Uh, that includes the twenty-two, twenty-two hundred dollar, twenty-two thousand dollars we're going to get to move forward with that debt. Is that correct?
No, that was.
That, that money was never allocated.
Yeah, it hasn't been allocated or.
On page one thirty-six, it's not broke down. It just shows scopes of service. That's why I asked, how, how'd you come up with twenty-two thousand, but. But that's just as a point of clarification for anybody who was maybe inquiring how they came up with that number, but I believe that we need to tear this.
So they, they broke down into five tasks in the scope of services, project management. They did not break down each task by cost. Correct.
So, Mr. Mayor, if you, if I may, you guys do know that, that they just said removing the bandstand is bad. And the best would be to repair or repurpose, so you guys are also going against. Um, the email that we just got, August twenty-first, twenty-twenty.
So I've actually personally restored a Victorian house from eighteen sixty. And I know the work and I know what's left in the bones of a house, once you've done that. And I respect the perspectives and the desire to keep that. I think we can. I, I don't think single timbers get us where we want to be and so.
Okay, um, we have made a council directive. We voted on this. We now moving forward. We have made a decision of the council. Um, moving forward, uh, ordinance bills, um. Uh, we don't have first or second. At this time, we have a third reading ordinance number four for twenty twenty-one, ordinance bill number twelve ninety-five. Ordinance amending the official zoning map, page one fifty-three by title only.
Ordinance bill number four for twenty twenty-one, ordinance number one-two-nine-five. An ordinance amending the official zoning map.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance.
Second that.
Motion to second by roll call, please.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trask.
Yes.
Counselor Richards. Counselor Sanchez.
Counselor, you'll have to give a reason for your abstination then.
I'm just protesting right now, the decision of the bandstand, I just.
So, ru- council rules and charter require that you vote.
Counselor Coleman, yes. Counselor Gorley?
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Chose seven eyes with no nays, approval of ordinance number four for twenty twenty-one. Ordinance bill number twelve ninety-five. Boards of committees, um, any topic of. Come up, any of your committees, let me wrap for us.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have included my report from the Charter Committee, Charter Review Committee. Um, as you noticed, we, the committee decided to make no changes to the city charter. Um, you can see what we discussed. Um, and it was a very interesting discussion. Um, but in the long run, they chose not to, uh. Have the cost of the election for the few changes that they, that the committee thought were, was necessary. Um, so I'm asking, I guess, that you accept the decision of the committee? Or you tell me to take it back and do it again or whatever?
What's the consensus of council?
I feel like it should be taken back.
You have specific things that you think we need to cover?
Cause it's, it's everything else in the mayor, right? Or something like that, the charter review?
That was one of the things.
Uh, I, I would like to, so, w- we, we talked about that for quite a while. Are you, are, as your, your, would your plan be to? Have the mayor elected during, okay, so now the, the reason we didn't do that is because. Um, the last election actually, because we could have had a city councillor on the council. Who's the mayor, who's never been involved in city government. Uh, so that's the reason that happened that way. So, because I think. From, I think the committee thought that if we did that, we would have somebody running the city that has no, no. Uh, base, not basis, but you know what I mean? You understand what I'm saying? Yeah. And so that would, that could create sort of a problem. Maybe not. It may not, it may not, but, um, uh. Not having the experience to get to that point, I think would have been the, the biggest concern that they, uh, that they had.
The, the other discussion on that was that normally a mayor is elected separately from the council. Uh, with a strong mayor government. And we don't have a strong mayor government. We have a city manager, counselor, council government. Which is a little bit different than a strong mayor like Albany, for instance, where their mayor is a full-time job actually. So, um, and in reality, the other discussion that came about with that was that. The mayor is, uh, act, the person who is the mayor is actually elected by the. Co- the citizens re- anyway, if they're a counselor. So that, that's kind of what, how those came about, Dylan?
Yeah, I was just kind of wondering what the history of that was or.
I'm actually, yeah, I'm actually in favor of leaving it the way it is because I believe that our mayor has to be collaborative. And they have to work together and. Listen to everybody's opinions on this council, where if they were competing in an outside venue for that seat. It's like every dog for themselves and there's no motivation to hear all the councilor's opinions. We just had a wonderful debate. And nobody was particularly wrong. It's just, it's healthy. We don't want to all. We don't want to all agree on everything, but at the same time, we don't want any kind of situation where we would be undermining each other. That collaboration is so very important to us.
I also feel like if we did change it, it would kind of make it to where, like right now, it's set up where like, it's whoever's most. Say this, but it's kind of like a popularity contest where maybe four councillors like someone, but then there's always maybe the one person that will never be able to be mayor. Because they just aren't liked enough within the council, but they might be liked within the city. Like right now, it's kind of. Democratic, I guess you could say in a way, because it's not getting a lot of people.
It's technically a republic right now because. People elect city councillors to represent them and then the city councillors elect the mayor and that would be a republic style council, if I'm correct.
One that I would have liked to have gotten rid of, beating the ordinances. But it worked, in my opinion, it wasn't worth the count, the, the money that would cost to, to remove it. And then of course, there's the lengthy description of city manager responsibilities that, we already have a, a contract in sync with him, we, which is why it's in there, I don't have any idea. But, uh, I think it was a consensus to say that we don't want to put this out because of the. The changes in our opinion, at least my opinion, I don't know, I can't talk, talk about the whole group, but I think the group decided that. It, the changes wouldn't have been much of a, a difference in the way it is right now, I mean, to a certain degree, so. That's where I'm at on that. And then somebody wanted a preamble, I don't know who, who do you think, who that could have been? I won't mention.
Me.
I think we need to leave it alone, it would cost too much, it would be too costly.
I was gonna say, I agree with Dave, I think it would be beneficial to get rid of the readings.
He's got speed.
Brandon's got speed readers, so.
Have speed readers, but we're really excited for Blair to bring forward the development code to be read.
Hours.
You mean the planning commission to recommend?
My fault, planning.
Any other committee reports?
Oh, I, yes, the YAC, tomorrow, the leadership class. From the Rural Development Initiative Plan will graduate. I think there's 16 of them, so I'm really excited, I'm going to be there and I think you are too.
I am going to be there.
And I think it's really exciting for our kids, I, I've met one of the students who is actually a sixth grader, will be a seventh grader. And I was extremely impressed, so I think it's a great group of kids, we'll.
Where is it going to be at?
At the senior center.
For the record. Any other committee reports?
There was a chamber meeting on Thursday and it was pretty quick, but they are, the IRS is looking into, they finally got their application to get their nonprofit status back, so that's good news.
Cool, any other reports? Moving on to Mayor's report, Council Gerson brought a request to me and I, I kind of thought it was a pretty good idea and I want to bring it before council members to see their thoughts. Other than the mayor and the pro team have to technically have to sit up front here. But the thought would be to move our councillors around so that. New councillor. Over time, so. The consensus of council on that.
I think that's a good idea, I'm sorry Dave.
Counselor Trask.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I wasn't hesitating because I would think, thought it was a bad idea.
I thought it was a good idea.
Depends on if I have to sit by you or not, that's what.
I guess you don't get to hear me. So, if I'm not sitting by you, then I don't get to pick you? I don't care.
Yeah, I'm fine with.
Counselor Sanchez.
Um, I think whatever you guys would like would be, just fine with me.
Okay, I, we can try that Julie, just kind of. When you come to council next, look to see where you're sitting. You know, the, the thought behind it is that, you know, you have one councillor in one end, one other, they don't get a chance to sit to another, next to another councillor. It's a good way to kind of get a, a team environment established here as a council, so. I thought it was a good idea, thank you, Council Gerson, City Manager Report.
Last week, we had staff training on Wednesday, David Rabner. Mr. Rabner is a, a coach who works with Fortune 500 companies, due to the COVID pandemic, we were able to secure his services. At an incredible discounted rate. And he did a great job talking about high functioning organizations, different personalities. How it's important that good teams have different personalities. Counselor Gorley was just speaking about the, the, good teams have different outlooks and different perspectives. Good teams can share those, good teams, highly functioning teams, high achieving teams. Do that, they debate and it's healthy and they disagree and then they move on. He then stayed with us for the day and council attended with also a couple other boards from our community that, that provides some vital services, members from the chamber. Of Commerce Board of Directors, the Sweet Home Community Foundation were also present. And went through a training with him. As you can see, one of the things he talked about, he's got a couple of things up here for you. Just a quick review for those, or introduction for those that may not, talked about the importance and the balance. Of relationships both up and down your organizational chart and understanding the need to balance those things. And understanding the importance of relationships up and down your organizational chart. And then you went through a, a process with the other boards where you listed the things that. Effective councillors or board members do and how they act and, and we listed those things up here as well and, and these. Were important attributes for high functioning teams, so it was a great. It was a great event, all day, all, all throughout, I've gotten several comments from the staff who, who enjoyed it immensely as well. Part of what they talked about was personality types. And we all went through a little exercise and now we look at each other and call each other, oh, you're a two, I can tell you're a two, so it was a lot of fun. It will help staff learn how to communicate better and understand how to relate to other people as they communicate and work through issues. I'd like to follow up a little bit on, on Counselor Gerson's RDI Leadership Graduation, just give some history and background to, to where this started. This was part of a grant received from Lynn County for our youth as part of their state of emergency that they declared several months ago. We were awarded a couple of different grants from, from Lynn County for this. The RDI Leadership Program actually came from the Ford Family Foundation. It's a highly, highly acclaimed leadership program. The Ford Family Foundation actually, people in this room, adults in this room have been through that leadership program. RDI has absorbed that, RDI stands for Rural Development Initiative. The person who ran that program at the Ford Family Foundation is now at RDI. They've now ran that program and made adaptations in several locations and several communities. In order to provide that same leadership program for, but appropriate for the youth of, of that. So this was a really big deal. It, it's, it's going to be a great deal, part of the program is training trainers. And so not only did these kids learn how to go through and do this, but there were some adults as well. And these, and these graduates will be expected to turn around and continue this program. Teaching other members of our community how to be good leaders and be involved in the community. So ideally, it's a, it's a self-replacing program that will continue to evolve over time and we'll keep moving it forward, so. It is 6:00 PM at the senior center and it should be a, a really great event.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to talk to, about the speed limits thing signs down on Main Street. I just talked to the chief about that a little while ago, I, and I appreciate that Public Works getting that put up. Because it's, I don't know what your data has been or if you haven't got that yet, but it'd be nice to know at some point, but. I was driving down Main Street by McDonald's and somebody passed me doing whatever speed they were and they saw that sign and they're thinking, oh, oh. Because it says slow down and they, and that person did, I, I don't remember who's an animal, doesn't make any difference, but. I, I'm glad that we've done it because it's, it has slowed it down, it really has, and I appreciate you guys getting that done. Seeing a lot of red.
I'll pass that on, and we are collecting, in the process, staff's collecting that data and hopefully within another week or so, we'll be pushing that out. We're really trying to get enough data, both with the, in the stealth mode and in the display mode to really see what effect it is or isn't having. Yes, a- as officers have time, they are trying to focus on specifically out here, the 3200 block plus. On Highway 20, just during, before school and after school, when school lets out, to try to curb some of that driving behavior. Oh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I just want to call council's attention to pay the graphs, starting on page 177 of your packet. You've already gotten most of this information through your quarterly reports, but just to put it into visual terms. Our revenues, obviously, through the month of April are still in line and actually we've, we've seen, we saw a significant jump in November that, that kind of outpaces what we've seen in prior years. Our expenses are still way under kind of that five-year average. And then certainly good news in both the graphs on page 179 and page 180 of your packet as well, indicating that. We are trending below where we normally are, so just wanted to give that little piece of information.